Ready, Dan? I go by that clock on the wall. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the table outside and also on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started today, I'm going to ask that we take a moment of silence. It's been kind of a rough week for county government. We actually have lost two employees. Sarah Zimmerman and her friend Amanda Shook were killed in a very tragic accident, as well as Sarah's eight-month-old baby. Sarah was one of our Douglas County Correctional Officers for about 15 years. Pat Herzog was, is an employee of the Building Commission and passed away unexpectedly this week as well. And so if we could, just take a moment of silence, remembering their families, remembering the communities to which they worked, and our community as a whole that had lost some very good people that have been dedicated to the service of our citizenry in Douglas County. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. With that, we will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 29, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 12, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bill Stow. I live at 152-80 Pepperwood Drive here in Omaha. At least my wife lets me come home there every night, so I claim that. I'm here because I saw a replay of one of the meetings, and there was an item in there that really rankled me, and I wanted to express myself on this. Larry Storer is a friend of mine, and he does a very important job for the citizens of this county in that he, in an altruistic way, he comes before you and he gives you feedback on the subjects that are before you. And I like that. I don't always agree with Larry. We debate things. But I understand he is working with really a pure heart in this whole thing. And the meeting when I saw Larry, he wasn't treated, I think, fairly in that he made a point, and after he sat down, after he was done and he was sitting down and he couldn't say anything else, one of the board members called it asinine. Now, asinine is not in the rhetoric of debate or discussion. It's in the rhetoric of bar fights. All right? And I think that was a chicken shit thing to do. And I think that when you have somebody here that makes a point, you ought to treat them well. You know, all men are created equal in this country. We should comport ourselves with a certain amount of dignity and respect for the citizens that get up here and speak, because this is a daunting thing for guys to do, is to come up here and speak. But to have somebody ridicule us after we sit down could put a chill on that, and we don't want that. And I think we want to encourage this feedback, and I think we want to encourage getting these opinions from people. So, you all, when he's not here today, but you all, Larry, an apology. Thank you. Oh, by the way, and thank you as a board for your continued efforts to make Omaha a livable place for everybody here. That is appreciated by us all. And with that, I'll relinquish my time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. My name's Alan Seibert. I live at, my wife and I live at 5537 North 140th Street in Omaha. We live in a single-family residence in northwest Omaha subdivision of Standing Bear Point. It's a one-and-a-half-story house with about 2,800 square feet. We've lived there since 1999. For tax year 2021, we received a notice from the Douglas County Assessor that our taxable value went up 47%. I appealed that to the Douglas County Board of Equalization and received some relief, but I filed an appeal in August of 2021 with Nebraska's Tax Equalization and Review Commission for that year. Since August, I've been periodically preparing for the Turk hearing by researching comparable sales, Nebraska statutes, previous Turk hearing transcripts, and Nebraska State Supreme Court rulings regarding tax valuations. This year, in 2022, received another notice from the assessor that our taxable value went up another 6.8%. Called the assessor's office to schedule a phone meeting to request a reduction. Prior to the meeting, the assessor assigned to me emailed a form very much resembling a property record that you can get from the D.C. Assessor's website. However, one of the pages of that form was a description of how cost basis was used to determine valuation. During our phone meeting, I told the assessor I was aware that cost basis is one of the acceptable methods of mass appraisal, but so is sales basis and income basis. I went on to say that according to my research and experience, sales basis or comparable sales should be used for single-family residents, not cost basis. We continued by discussing several of the regulations and hearing transcripts I found. Eventually, the assessor explained that the model used by the assessor's office uses the Marshall Swift Residential Cost Manual. I told the assessor that manual is generally used for new construction estimates, not for values of existing properties, and does not properly consider the characteristics mentioned in Nebraska statutes that are normally used to appraise a property. The assessor gave me no reason to think that the method used to determine my valuation was not being used for all other similar properties in Douglas County. And we were not, my wife and I, were not granted a reduction. So I give you this history at this time, not just to complain about our valuations, but to let this board know that it appears to me the process used by the Douglas County Assessor for single-family residents' evaluations violates Nebraska statutes, particularly 77-112. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the Board of Equalization under citizen comments about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution approving the application for tax exemption Form 457 on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve D and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 29, 2022. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, April 5, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through O. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Okay, we're going to pull E1, so the motion would be A through O minus E1. And then Commissioner Kavanaugh, you have a question?
Yeah, so on item E, I just have some questions for the record.
Sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Rogers. Ron, can we get Commissioner Kavanaugh's mic on? All right, thank you.
Yes, on item E, we have a couple of items on here, and one is approval of a contract with Charles Drew Health Center to provide the needed mental behavioral services for the Douglas County Youth Center Behavioral Health Initiative, $348,148. As I recall, we had contracted or entered into a cooperative agreement with UNMC for similar services some time ago. Is this in addition to what we had agreed to do with UNMC?
No, Commissioner, it's all the same. The way that the contract works is that the funds are paid to Charles Drew Health Center. They then subcontract with UNMC Department of Psychiatry, CHI Department of Psychiatry, and other services in order to administer the behavioral health initiative. So it is done that way now, Commissioner, instead of separate contracts for each.
Good. So this $348,148 is an annual amount?
Correct.
This will be a recurring cost going forward?
Correct. Under DCYC's budget, they do have funding for the next two years for this project. Under their current budget through ARPA funding that was given to DCYC to pay for this for two years.
Okay, so then this $348,148 is for what year?
This current year.
So you're saying the ARPA funding is for next fiscal year?
For this year and for next year. There's an automatic renewal in the contract, Commissioner, which would automatically renew it for next year, and then after that, we would have to come back before the board.
Okay, so the amount of ARPA funding for this year is what?
The $348,148.
So these are ARPA dollars?
These are ARPA dollars.
Okay. Is there some reason that we're doing these separate from the ARPA funding component on the agenda?
The ARPA funding for DCYC was previously approved by this board and given directly to DCYC, so that funding has already been approved, Commissioner. This is now the contract to ensure that those ARPA funds are being used appropriately.
Thank you. Item two, approval of contract with the Council of Juvenile Justice Administrators for staffing analysis and transition planning for the Douglas County Youth Center, $93,064. Are these ARPA funds?
I'm going to defer to Joe on that one as to that question, as to the funding of it.
Those are not ARPA funds. Those are funds that are coming from the Juvenile Justice Fund.
General funds?
No, it's the Juvenile Justice Fund.
Okay, what's the source of the revenue in the Juvenile Justice Fund?
It's the penny-and-a-half levy.
Is this a one-time cost?
Yes.
And, Miss Havakati, maybe you know and can explain for the record, the Council of Juvenile Justice Administrators is who?
It is a national organization that all states belong to. Within the juvenile justice arena, their expertise is working with states on their juvenile justice facilities. Some states, of course, are state-operated, some are county-operated. Ours is a county-operated detention facility, but this is their expertise.
And is this a one-time cost?
This is a one-time cost.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, with that, are there any other questions or comments on the consent? Again, it's items A through O minus E1. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will go back to consent agenda, item E1. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Next, we have one recognition and proclamation. The resolution declaring April 22 as National County Government Month, recognizing the commitment of the National Association of Counties and the essential role the Americas' counties play in the well-being of our communities and our nation. I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serve more than 300 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas since 1991, the month of April, has been recognized as National County Government Month, an annual celebration of county government. And whereas America's counties provide public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, environmental stewardship, and economic services. And whereas, under the leadership of the 2022 National Association of Counties President, Larry Johnson, NACO is demonstrating how counties thrive by supporting residents and businesses as we recover from the Corona pandemic. And whereas counties can do that by focusing on six areas: technology, equipping counties to expand broadband access to ensure all residents can learn, do business, and communicate effectively; health, improving our overall health and well-being; readiness, preparing the county workforce to gain the skills we need; infrastructure, strengthening resilience in the backbone of our communities; and V, vulnerable communities, advancing equity, strengthening our safety net, and ensuring that residents have the help they need; and lastly, economic opportunities, creating conditions for all of us to compete in the 21st century economy. And whereas Douglas County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, safety, and future of all residents in practical and cost-effective ways. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board declares the month of April 2022 as National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, school, and resident to learn about the important role that counties play in the well-being of our communities and to participate in any and all county government awareness appreciation. Dated this fifth day of April 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Larry?
Good morning. Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska 68132. Here's the thing. This is the type of thing I've been talking to, attempting to talk with you over the last few years. I don't think that I or other citizens in this county or city pay your salaries to be beholden, recognizing, and doing business with 3,000 and some counties. It should be with us. We probably pay your salary to go hobnob with these people. I don't think that's fair to the taxpayer. I know you're all busy. I'm not wrapped up in things like you are, so I have time to be informed, whether you think I am or not. The Great Reset is a topic right now, and this type of thing is what the Great Reset is kind of about. It also is sort of related to a new version of Marxism or cultural Marxism or New World Order, in which the elites somewhere out there away from this county and this city, some national associations or a world, one world government association, may be indeed plotting against us using COVID. You need to hear some of those things from citizens occasionally because it might have some fact to it. So I am against the resolution. I want you to stay here, spend the money here, and talk to us and not draft your resolutions and everything according to what the National Association of Counties tell you. They don't pay your salary, I don't think. If they do, that would be political corruption, would it not? We pay your salary. So please, cut out this stuff about national associations and best practices of everybody but us. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak about an item not on the agenda?
It's me again, Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. A lot of citizens here today. I want to follow up to last week. Again, most of these are not my words. Last week, I wrote or read from the back cover of Mark Levin's Marxism in America. You people need to consider the possibility that that's true, although I was told that it is not and that there's no factual things there in the federal government papers or whatever. That was not true. Well, today, I want to read from The Founder's Key by another well-known American and accomplished Arthur professor and a legal expert. I won't read from the front cover, but today, the integrity and unity of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution are under attack by the progressive political movement. And yet, writes Larry Arnn, professor, Hillsdale College, words of the Declaration of Independence across the, ring across the ages. The arrangements of the Constitution have a way of organizing our actions and to produce certain desirable results, and they have done this more reliably than any governing instrument in the history of man. Connect these arrangements to the beauty of the Declaration, and one has something inspiring and commanding. Dr. Arnn is the president of Hillsdale College. He reveals the integral unity of the Declaration and the Constitution. You can't separate them. Therefore, they form the pillars upon which the liberties and the rights of American people stand. United, they have guided history's first self-governing nation, a unique constitutional republic, forming our government under certain universal and eternal principles. Unfortunately, the effort to redefine government to reflect the changing and growing social order have gone very far towards success. Politicians such as Franklin Roosevelt found ways to condemn and discard the Constitution and to redefine the Declaration to justify government without limit. It does appear that way. As a result, both documents have been weakened, that their influence diminished and their meaning obscured, paving the way for a modern administrative state, which is people making rules and regulations that are not necessarily voted on. And their meaning obscured, giving the way, yeah, I'm sorry. Founder's Key is a profound, powerful way call to rediscover the connection between the two mighty documents and thereby restore our political faith and revive our free institutions. And finally, real quickly, I want to quote a community columnist right here from River City. It's out there in the public domain. His name is Rick Glusha. He gets a lot more attention than most citizens. But in here, he tells us that believe, and we've listened to evidence, of a stolen election. The implication of those words is that we perceive the election was stolen from us, and we have a right to talk about that and expect you people to think about it. But in that newspaper article, he's refuting that there's any fact to that.
One minute.
And because there's no fact to that, as I was told last week, we are the ones, we are the, what do they call it, the, well, I don't know, Hillary Clinton said it, that we're the bad guys, not the Marxists, not the people that were rioting in the streets all of 2020. This is Marxism, cultural Marxism, and he's the one that is uninformed, as are some people on this board. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to committees. Our first is our Finance Committee. The first item is the Budget Report as presented. Next is our ARPA funding. Approval of a resolution authorizing the award of $400,000 to the Intercultural Senior Center to provide funding for the Mental Health Care Coordination for Older Adults Initiative, which will provide mental health care coordination, language services, and transportation to immigrants over 50 years of age. This is being brought by Commissioner Rogers, and the investment also includes Commissioners Kavanaugh and Boyle. Commissioner Garcia? Did I say it wrong? Oh, I said right, sorry. Commissioner Garcia. That's what I meant. Did you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, so this is a follow-up to the ARPA committee where this was discussed in more detail, some quick highlights of this mental health expansion for the Intercultural Senior Center. They will be contracting a licensed mental health care provider to be able to provide one-on-one care onsite now at their nonprofit location, which will be a great advancement for their mental health services to their clientele, as well as facilitators of support groups and small groups for seniors in various languages, including Korean, Spanish, Nepali, and as well as caseworkers to be able to facilitate any other external resources needed by the seniors to be able to connect to other resources in the community. And on top of that, they are even providing transportation to those resources and to the Intercultural Senior Center. So it's quite the comprehensive program that will do a lot of good for our seniors in the community. program that will do a lot of good for our seniors in the community.
Okay. We do have Ms. Padilla with us if anyone has any questions, but Commissioner Morgan and then Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yesterday morning, I had decided to stop there myself and take a look at the facility and was most impressed of the work that they're doing. They were packaging food sacks for people, and I happened to be there around 8:15 or so and went through the entire structure. And then by about 8:45 or so, the people started coming in there to be there for the day and talked to a few of them at the door. And I think this is really most impressive. I remember the building when it was a trucking engine facility, and I have to tell you, it's as clean as any place I've been, and the staff just seemed to be working diligently. And I mentioned to Commissioner Garcia that if there's something else they might be doing in the $25,000, $30,000 range that's needed there to assist the seniors and others, visitors, to let me know, and I'd like to consider something like that to help with. And I'm just real appreciative of what they're doing. And no one spends a night there, but they are there in the daytime. And I think it's really a healthy, good thing that we're doing in our community for our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I want to commend Carolina Padilla and the folks there at the Intercultural Senior Center for the great job that they do. When we started meeting last year regarding this request, I was very impressed with the operation. It's in my district, and so I'm glad to designate 150,000 of my ARPA funding to support this initiative. And I want to commend Commissioner Garcia for seeing this through. We both devoted a fair amount of time to analyzing the requests by the center, and I hope that in ARPA II, we can revisit some of the funding that was not included in this particular round. I think that the need for these services is only going to grow, particularly in light of the fact that we will probably be receiving quite a few new folks coming to our community from the Ukraine in the very near future, and many of them will probably fit into the service population that the center provides for. We're all aware of the terrible attack on the Ukraine by Russia and the trauma that's resulted. It's on the front page of every paper and on the news, by the outrageous war crimes being perpetrated on these people. Many of them are going to end up in the United States, and some of them will end up in our community and should qualify for the services provided by the Intercultural Senior Center. Commissioner Garcia and I met with individuals of the local Ukraine community, and they are ready and being prepared to welcome these folks to our community. I think that the use of ARPA funding to help alleviate the suffering of these people and to serve the entire immigrant community that we enjoy in this city is a really good use of these funds. And I know from my repeated visits to the center that they do a really good job of servicing the needs of these people. So Carolina, thank you for all you do, you and your staff, and we look forward to working with you going forward. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this agenda item?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. Please don't get me wrong. There's a lot of these things that we need, and I'm not against helping. I might even volunteer. And I don't necessarily think either one of you are internally bad or evil. But just the other night, once again, a news story, not my words. There's a tremendous amount of fraud and theft going on with this ARPA money. Was that funny? I don't think so. It's our national treasury, not theirs, not yours. If Douglas County, City of Omaha gets accused or it's found out that they illegally used some of this money, you're going to have to cough it up. Don't come to me for it. But don't come to me or the federal treasury, which are my dollars, because it's a race for the money. Do you not understand with current events that we may be in a terrible long war that we can't afford? We're depleting our treasury. You're, the so-called president's depleting our oil resources. This has got to stop. You have to listen to the people here. If you need money for mental health awareness, fine. You need to raise the money through us, not by way of my tax dollars that I paid last year. You need to be out of Conable only to us. And if all of these nonprofits can't survive without ARPA money, then maybe they need to cut their budgets, which means you guys need to cut your budgets. But yes, you can, you can go all skip along and praise hallelujah and help people, but you need to find a better way to fund it. If we can't afford it, we can't afford it. Why shouldn't I form a 501(c)(3) and come down here and ask for funding? Think about it. I'm only saying your, your perspective on governance is out of whack. Thank you.
Just a minute. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Morgan?
Larry, if he ever visited the facility and sees the work that they're doing, it could be a healthy thing to do.
All right. Any other questions or comments with that? Please vote.
You know, I'm not sure I got a motion or a second, Commissioner Borgeson.
Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioners, Commissioner Garcia. Motion passes seven to zero.
The next is an ARPA Funding Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the Award of $50,000 to the Food Bank for the Heartland for a fresh produce purchasing program, $50,000 to Education Rights Council for a program which provides mental health counseling, consulting, services to families of special education students, and $50,000 to Bannister's Leadership Academy for a program which deals with youth violence and another program which addresses mental health and behavioral health challenges of their students. Altogether, this is $150,000 being invested from Commissioner Garcia's allocation. Commissioner Garcia, would you like to say anything?
Briefly, the first one for Food Bank of the Heartland, we know that we have many great pantry services in Douglas County. The thing about pantry items is that they're usually canned items or many times boxed items, but produce is actually really hard to get a hold of. And so this funding goes to support fresh produce through the Food Bank for the Heartland for local families in need of pantry services. So that's really the focus of the first one. The second two are more focused on supporting our youth who have been affected by the pandemic, especially in regard to their academic achievement, performance, and overall kind of journey in education. The Education Rights Council does an amazing job of advocating for students, especially those who have IEPs and what we would say are neurological diversity kind of issues going on where they need that special attention to thrive academically but sometimes fall through the cracks. And so Education Rights Council is there to both provide legal aid, case management, and even mental health support as well for those individuals. So that's the Education Rights Council. And the last one, Bannister's Leadership Academy, also supporting our youth through both academic tutoring and also small group and one-on-one mental health support to students in Omaha Public Schools in Douglas County. So that's the quick summary. Thank you. I would move to approve.
Any further questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
The last ARPA funding is the Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the Allocation of $2 Million to Support Tourism in Douglas County. This is coming from the larger allocation of funds being invested in our tourism industry. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
According to the resolution, this is to fund Douglas County Visitor Promotion Council programs that have to do with tourism, travel, hospitality industry. And the approval of $2 Million of the county's ARPA allocation was to provide funding to current Douglas County Visitor Improvement Fund recipients to respond to the negative impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, including $100,000 to the Omaha Community Foundation to administer the grant review and awards on behalf of the county. And I think Ms. Hall is here as the administrator overseeing the Visitors Improvement Fund. In the normal course of events, we don't contract out for administrative services on that fund. Is that correct?
This is the first disbursement of ARPA funds for this purpose. So this is ARPA funds federal, separate from the Visitor Improvement Funds, which are designated per state statute. So that's correct. Typically, the Visitor Promotion Council allocates the Visitor Improvement Funds separately, and they're administered in our office.
Right. So these are to fund currently approved Visitor Improvement Fund projects. Is that correct?
No. It's, the eligible applicants, the Visitor Promotion Council recommended that the eligible applicants be current recipients of Visitor Improvement Funds, but the ARPA funds are a different purpose and different eligibility criteria. But the recommendation was to work with current recipients of Visitor Improvement Funds because that narrowed it down to a group of tourist attractions that this county has typically recognized as a tourist attraction.
So individuals and groups who are not current recipients of Visitor Improvement Funds would not be eligible for applying for these ARPA funds?
Correct.
And only Visitor Improvement Fund projects and individuals and groups would be funded by these funds?
Correct. The recommendation was to fund tourist attractions that are currently receiving Visitor Improvement Funds.
Which is generally under the purview of the Visitor Improvement Fund Program to begin with, right?
Correct.
So would these be new and different projects than the Visitors Improvement Fund Committee has entertained?
They could be. It's different purposes. This is specifically to address harm, you know, impact from the COVID-19 pandemic, whereas the Visitor Improvement Fund is to improve attractions in the county.
So is this going to be at the discretion of the Omaha Community Foundation to decide who is funded and who is not?
No. They're working within conjunction. The Visitor Promotion Council developed these recommendations for how to make awards, and I think the Omaha Community Foundation would be in communication with us in any feedback the Visitor Promotion Council has on that.
So in the normal course of events, the Visitors Improvement Council would make recommendations to this board, and we would authorize payment through that fund?
Correct.
Would that happen under this program?
Well, that's what this is, is this is essentially the Visitor Promotion Council's recommendation to the board right now.
Yes. I guess my question is, would the programs that the Omaha Community Foundation is supposedly going to select come back to this board for authorization as they would in the normal course of the Visitors Promotion Council grant programs?
No, this resolution is written like the other ARPA resolutions, so
Sorry, I forgot to tell you, one minute.
Once this, if the resolution is approved, then those awards would follow, much like the other ARPA allocations, the agreements would follow.
Okay, so why do we just hand over authority to fund these programs to the Omaha Community Foundation when historically we've been doing this as a board through the Visitors Improvement, Visitors Promotion Council?
Well, this is a separate, this isn't the Visitor Improvement Fund, so that process will still continue as usual. This process is looking more like how the board has done ARPA allocations.
Thank you. I guess I have some questions about whether or not we need to spend $100,000 on the Omaha Community Foundation's administration of these grants.
Commissioner Friend?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As a co-chair of the Finance Committee, I always feel, every week, I feel like, I feel like a broken record, but I'm going to say it again, and I beg your indulgence, because I think sometimes on the county board, we feel like, I feel like, the old adage, a tree fallen in the forest and there's nobody there to hear it. I don't know how many people in this county actually tune in or try to figure out exactly what's happening with $55 million of ARPA funds, let alone the normal appropriations process, different, of course, than other appropriations processes around the state. But I don't know how many people tune in. And what happened with the ARPA funding, and I made some comments last week that I certainly don't take back, I've taken comments back before, but not those, it's a, it's a unique appropriation. We've never seen anything quite like it. Now, because of that, the process is therefore unique, and it's something that we, I beg, I beg, maybe somebody could correct me, but it's something that we haven't been through before. We go through appropriations processes all the time. We can criticize them. We can look at them and say, these aren't sufficient enough. This one can be criticized, and it can be, and it can be analyzed pretty thoroughly, but it's very unique. So what's happening, in my opinion, I think the citizens of Douglas County need to understand that the reporting relating to the appropriation when it comes to ARPA funding is crucial. It's key. And understanding that organizations are signing a statement of work or information that provides data back is possibly a modicum of information relating to metrics and success rates of these programs throughout this county. Now, so, if it, it's important to make clear to all the organizations that receive the funds from the county through the federal government, or from the federal government through the county, that there are deliverables associated with it. They have to show us what those numbers look like. At least, I would like to see what those numbers look like. I don't think it's difficult to get a quarterly statement that says, look, we have a 25% success rate. I mean, we actually hit some folks, and they're actually doing some good. I don't care if it's 10%. I want to see what type of value it provides. And I think we're going to get that. I'm comfortable, after all of the discussions we've had over the last five months, that that'll actually occur. So I hope that, I guess I hope that the citizens of Douglas County would appreciate that these expectations are real, and that the measurables are going to be there, not just, not just for the citizens of Douglas County, they're going to be there for us. They're going to be there for us first, and hopefully disseminated appropriately. So I, you know, one of the things I said last week or two weeks ago, I don't know, they all run together, is the ARPA funding that came is understandable, but it also causes significant problems, significant problems. It's caused problems for our economy. These organizations- It, we, these organizations need this money. I don't think there's any doubt about it. But we have, it's Economics 101. I can go back to 1982, and I can analyze it. You can read Milton Freeman, gosh, you could read the Marxist Manifesto, you can read all these type of things, and you're gonna get information that shows you that an influx of money that is, for lack of a better term, unfettered, will force your economy into interesting and difficult situations. All I'm saying is, and I'm not preaching to anybody, I'm just saying, I think we all know that, and I think what we're trying to do is say, there are gonna be those measurables, and we are gonna understand what actually happened with this funding. So, not to, I guess, assure people, but maybe to assure myself, I, these are difficult, these are unique and difficult times, and I think we're doing our best to wade through them, and there's a lot of moving parts. So to me, we'll just try to keep our eye on the ball and make sure that that ball is rolling appropriately. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And I appreciate that. I think it's important that we do measure metrics. We have given tens of millions of dollars to this community already, and that was recognizing that they were impacted by the COVID pandemic, and that's appropriate. In the CARES go-around, we gave, for instance, I believe $6 million to the Omaha Zoo Foundation, which is far in excess of what they would normally get from the Visitors Improvement Fund. And in discussions with Commissioner Boyle regarding this, because it's under her committee's jurisdiction, we went into the possibility of some windfalls to groups like the Zoo Foundation, if they get CARES funding and Visitor Improvement funding scaled back, and now ARPA funding, in addition to the not-for-profit funding that we have done, much of it through the Omaha Community Foundation. And we haven't gotten back any metrics on any of these expenditures. I agree with you. We should measure these programs, because we're putting big bucks into it. The other thing is, we have done virtually nothing for the small business community that was severely impacted by COVID in our community. And there was just a report, I believe, on KMTV the other night about the restaurant community saying, what about us? And we've done nothing, and I think that we need to revisit that. Before we go around for another round of not-for-profit funding, the small business community that employs people and pays taxes and provides services needs to be upfront in this process, and they've gotten virtually nothing, while the not-for-profit community, which, nothing against them, and they contribute to our society, have gotten tens of millions of dollars, and now here we have another couple million dollars to supplement that. A hard look, and a responsible look, at what we have done with the Visitors Promotion Programs and their funding, inclusive of CARES and ARPA and all the other COVID relief dollars that we've given to that community, is just responsible fiscal management. And then, I totally agree with you, asking them to come back and say, okay, well, what did you do with the money? And what positive impact did it have on our community is just, you know, good stewardship. Finally, we need to do something for the small businesses in this community, many of which had to close their doors and are struggling to restart because of the COVID pandemic, and we've done virtually nothing for them.
Commissioner Friend?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't, I, I hear Commissioner Kavanaugh loud and clear. What I would say, just as a little bit of a caveat, not to start a debate, but I love debate, and he knows it, what happened over the last couple of years is, it's not just, not just what I was talking about, everything that we're dealing with here is unique, but what's happened over the last couple of years, you can draw a dichotomy. The COVID funding came in, and there was a certain statutory eligibility attached to it. And we, and we, and we kind of knew, because they didn't give us that much information, we kind of knew what that statutory eligibility looked like, federal statutory eligibility. When the ARPA funding, when they said, okay, and by the way, two different administrations, two different thought processes, things were just pounded out toward us. And during that, during that period of time, with the initial round of COVID funding, Commissioner Kavanaugh would remember, and the rest of the commissioners would remember, I just got here, and we did provide a modicum of support to the small business community. I also, frankly, there were opportunities through the Small Business Administration and everything else, for businesses in this nation, I did myself. I took a loan and paid it back. There was different types of help with that COVID funding. ARPA is different. It's a different statutory eligibility associated with it. One of the reasons, and I raised my hand and said, I don't think this is a very good idea, but we did it anyway, and I'm kind of glad we did, is that we employed Deloitte to actually look at that statutory eligibility, because it saved us a little bit of time. Because that statutory eligibility with ARPA is different. Not was, it is. It's a totally different breed of cat. So now that we understand that, the difficult part now is, the measurables back when we delivered all that COVID money were different. I haven't got any measurables back from, from small businesses. I don't know what that looks like, and Commissioner Kavanaugh's right. I don't think we're gonna see it, because we didn't require it. Under these circumstances with the ARPA funding, it's a different situation, it's a different statutory eligibility, and I have expectations that we're gonna see numbers. Now, if we don't, we can raise our hand and go, ooh, hey, I don't see the numbers, and then maybe we'll get them. But us going back to the small business community now, after a year and a half, and saying, by the way, we need some numbers, you really think we're gonna get those? No. Because they weren't required, A, and B, I don't know that they have them. I don't. I'm a small business. I can't tell you what it did to my business. All I know is it suffered. So if the county board asks me for numbers, I got COVID money. I personally got it. My wife and I put the checks in the bank. I can't tell you how it helped me or how it didn't help me. All I know is, I got it, I put it in the bank. This is a different animal. And I do think that the organizations that have been coming in to the subcommittee meetings have laid out their understanding of what they believe the metrics, appropriate metrics would be to provide. And we said, yeah, that, that sounds like a great idea. It's going to give us an understanding, and it's going to adhere to what I believe the federal guidelines are that they laid out. And again, final point, the federal guidelines with the ARPA funding are loose, too. I said this a long time ago, I forget a lot of stuff, but I didn't forget this. The federal guidelines are very loose. There's like five pillars, and they just said, go, infrastructure, knock yourselves out. I mean, get, get these people help. Get the local governments help. Get these people help. Get some infrastructure built. And they laid out five pillars as to how that could be done. The bottom line is, we're trying to do that. We are doing the best that we possibly can.
One minute.
Under a very unique, thank you, under a very unique situation. And with that in mind, I appreciate what Commissioner Kavanaugh's saying, but again, we're dealing with a different animal here. We're chasing a different rabbit down a hole. I don't like it, but we have to chase the rabbit, and then we're gonna find out what we see. And we're gonna do the best we can, once we catch that rabbit, just, okay, enough references. Allison won, I, huh, she's going huh, huh, huh. Okay. I've got 30 seconds. I'd like to hear what the doctor has to say, if she has any comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Larry?
Very quick.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. Can you hang on a minute, Larry? Commissioner Boyle?
I always love Commissioner Kavanaugh, or Kavanaugh, I love Commissioner Kavanaugh, but I love Commissioner Friend's entertainment value, that's for sure. So just a couple of things about this resolution in particular. The Visitor Promotion Council and the ARPA money, it feels like we're talking about two different funding mechanisms, and I think that might be causing some of the confusion here. So I think it would be helpful for me to have the person who heads the Visitor Promotion Council to come and kind of explain what they do and how they, through that process, because again, that's different from the ARPA money that's being allocated. That's, it's a state statute that, from motel and hotel taxes, money goes into this fund, and then there, this Visitor Promotion Council distributes it to really those that are responsible for bringing visitors here. So they're, so that's why the zoo, for example, for the Visitor Promotion Council, that's why the zoo gets the money, because they, they bring in a lot of folks, and so hotels and motels are filled because of them, so then they get, they get some back. So that's how that whole process works. They are not hurting for money, and we all know that. But for the Visitor Promotion Council, it's like, how do you, how do you feed those that end up, you know, giving you, giving you more return? So I think if I have, have them come and speak, I think it might just help clarify what their purpose is, because I think that that's kind of getting lost in some of this. The second thing is, this ARPA funding is, ARPA funding, it's not really visitor promotion, that state statute 262 hotel-motel pot that this is coming from. The reason that we thought it might be something to consider was because there are, yes, the zoo is on the list of the Visitor Promotion Council, but there are also much smaller nonprofits that are really trying to stay afloat at this point, like September Fest is an example. So there's certain smaller organizations that are trying to get funding, and they got their budgets slashed when, when we did some of that, too. So bottom line is, the thought of providing this funding was actually to help bring them up to a place where they, they don't become obsolete. So that was really the goal of it, help some of them survive. But, so maybe Catherine can explain a little bit better, maybe give more details about how I see this as separate items. The only question I have, to be honest with you, is why are, and it's, I just need an explanation, why do we have the community foundation administering this when we kind of already know who, who needs it, is what it seems like to me? So Catherine, do you mind helping me out with that?
Sure. And that was the recommendation, the chair and vice chair of the Visitor Promotion Council recommended, an initial connection with Omaha Community Foundation. And the county has had a good working relationship with them from the CARES Act funds, and they've been helpful to us in both sort of the front end and the back end of that awards. And so it was that experience, I believe one of the concerns that chair and vice chair voiced was access in some of the smaller groups that might not know. We know the ARPA funds, because it's a different pot of funding from the Visitor Improvement Fund, there are different requirements, and they are, a lot of federal requirements that might be challenging to wade through. And so Omaha Community Foundation is well-versed in a lot of this funding, and would be well-positioned to provide some sort of that, that technical assistance and guidance. And also, you know, the award management and some of the backend reporting, because of their familiarity, they could do some of what happens once the awards are made, to ensure a lot of that reporting is fulfilled.
Okay. All right. That helps a lot. Okay. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Larry?
Let's read them, make this real brief, but I can't get certain cartoons out of my mind now, after Mike brought that up. But anyway, you know, the Republicans founded on two houses of government, the passions of the people in the, in the house, and the senators, of course, who were supposed to be able to quell the passions of the people. Omaha reminds me of that. The city council to this body. So we kind of look to you people to quell the passions of the people. The people see this as connected. There is no disconnect between ARPA and COVID. People are running to get the money to implement COVID programs. There are also people running to steal the money. That's part of the national debate. What should have been debated before funds were dispersed was how many local small businesses are going to fail because of COVID. Good idea. It caused a lot of people to stop going out, stop buying things, and a lot of businesses went kaput. How many thousands? 10,000s? How many hundred thousands across the country because of it? Are we going to go back and bail them out? What I'm saying is, you're, you're so busy, you're not looking at the big forest, you're looking at trees. Some of them come down here one at a time, or maybe sometimes they're lined up 10 at a time. People need money. You're trying to quell the passions of the heart. Thank you for that, but can you afford it? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? I think we did have a motion in a second, if I remember. Okay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the HR Committee, the Human Resource Weekly Report as presented, and then the Legislative Report. Last week, March 31st marked the 52nd day of the 60th session, and they were quite busy. On March 28th, as I reported last week, Senator Blood introduced LR 263, a constitutional amendment, to require the legislature to reimburse political subdivisions if they were placing a mandate on them. It was a very interesting debate. I was down there and talked to quite a few of the senators, and there are concerns about some language, and so there'll be work on it, I'm sure, as we, as it moved forward, it did advance to select file. Then LB 1014, if you remember, is the appropriate, appropriate federal funds allow, allocated to the state of Nebraska. That moved on to final reading, and there were actually 34 votes for cloture to allow the bill to advance. On March 29th, two of the three bills were filibustered, and additionally, both project bills, the Lake Recreation and the Perkins County Canal, passed from select to final. Then on March 30th, the LB 920, which we have been really watching quite a lot, and was prioritized by, it was Senator Lathrop's bill, and, and it had provisions in it that would change where someone who was, had a felony, three, three A and fours, where they would serve their time. So instead of in the state prison, they would be spending their time in county jails. Well, 920 was, was brought, and John Kavanaugh, Senator Kavanaugh prioritized it, but what happened was, there was a lot of work, and they were combined, and there were provisions in it that now they're gonna do a task force to look at quite a bit of the provisions of it. So we were happy with that. We did work with Senator Lathrop and Senator Matt Hanson to come to a compromise on that, and so there'll be more study and conversation on that bill. And then LB 873, which Senator Friesen's priority, which reduced the income tax, social security tax, and provided a property tax credit on community college taxes paid. That bill advanced to find, select file with 44 yes votes. And then LB 920 will resume general file debate probably actually today. LB 1024, which was Senator Wayne's, adopt the Economic Recovery Act. That passed on, as well as our nine, LB 908, which was our virtual meeting, open meetings bill. And we just got word today that it actually went on to final reading, and so we were, we're happy about that. And then this week, I think, is gonna be a busy week as well, because it includes the tax reduction bill, the criminal justice sentencing reform, the consumption tax constitutional amendment, and several, several others, but we'll be watching closely. So with that, there, are there any other comments on legislation? Larry?
Larry Stor, 5015, Lafayette, Omaha, 68132. I just want to quickly point out that, yes, you're very busy. We have a one-horse legislature, not a two-house, and I'm supposed to be part of that second What I'd like to know in your discussions and your, is how you're representing us on all of those issues. How many citizens have time to read all of the information on your website and all of the attachments? We'd like to hear from you. Do you support each one of those, or are you... We'd like to hear from you, do you support each one of those, or are you against each one of those? And how does that represent us? That's what we'd like to know. Thank you.
With that, there is no need for executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
[crosstalk]
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Give us one moment, please. And, Madam Chair, could you repeat the motion a second again? I apologize.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers-
Thank you.
...to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I wish I would have known that one. Hmm, that's not good.
Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes, seven to zero. We are adjourned at 10:10 a.m.